I'd like to call the Town Council Regular Session to Order at 7:30. The date is Monday, January 10, 2011. And if you could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, with liberty and justice for all.
Dale, could we please have the roll call?
Council President Whaley?
Here.
Council Vice President McAtee?
Here.
Councilwoman Eddy?
Here.
Councilwoman Fogarty?
Here.
Councilman O'Neil?
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Dale. Could we please have an approval of the minutes of the previous meetings? We had a work session December 8 and December 13, 2010. Do we have a motion, please?
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention motion carries. 5-0-0. Could we also have a motion for the Regular Session December 13, 2010?
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention motion carries. 5-0-0. Would anybody like anything removed from the Consent Agenda?
Ella, I make a motion to remove Item C from the Consent Agenda under Communications.
Anybody else? Okay. Can we have a motion to accept the Consent Agenda?
I so move.
As amended. Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention motion carries. 5-0-0. Which brings us to Licenses. We have a resolution granting a holiday license to DEG LLC Doing Business as Wakefield Books, 160 Old Tower Hill Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island. Application by Jeffrey W. Levy, Managing Member, Wesley, Massachusetts. So do we have anyone here? Welcome. Familiar face?
Larry Fish representing the Wakefield Mall.
Thank you, Larry.
The owner of the Wakefield Mall is going to take over the bookstore and it's going to be called Wakefield Books. All the same employees. Common ownership to the wall. That's any other questions you might have? He wanted to make sure that the town had a local bookstore.
It's been the buzz around town. So do we have questions here at the table for Larry?
Larry, when's it going to change? I know they're having a sale right now at the bookstore.
Walden Books is supposed to vacate by the end of the month, the 31st, and he expects to open Wakefield Books around the middle of the month in February. He's going to repaint, re-cop it, and then restock.
So it's just going to close for a couple of weeks?
Just a couple of weeks. Yeah. Yep.
Was Walden Books, I mean, a franchise individually owned? Will Wakefield Books, he'll be doing his own selection and working through catalogs?
I'm not sure of all the particulars, Jim, but Walden Books is owned by Borders and corporate America and so this is going to be locally owned. He'll be buying all his own books that will have nothing to do with Borders or Walden's.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No. I'll make a motion to approve License A.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, and this is good news for our town, so thank you. All right. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention motion carries. 5-0-0. Thank you. Which brings us to, let's see, Communication B. This is a resolution adopted December 4, 2010 by the Middletown Town Council and a resolution received January 5, 2011, proposed for adoption by Councilman O'Neil in support of the return of the Americas Cup races to Newport are received and placed on file and the Town Council further directs.
Well, we've had quite a bit of discussion about Mr. O'Neil's resolution, and I think we're prepared with just a few changes to support. Is that right, Jim?
Yes. I believe we have some editing here. I can go through the editing here in a second, but again, just to bring up before the audience and this council, Town of Middletown is the first council in the state to back the Americas Cup effort. Governor's Office and Richard Leach have gotten on board. All the tourism councils are on board. Convention centers are on board. So I think the state needs to get all of our councils and all of the General Assembly members on board. This, I've got wonderful memories of the amount of business that was done over the decades with the Americas Cup activity. And the boating activity in Rhode Island's phenomenal. Our natural assets and resources are phenomenal. And as a spokesman for the Oracle Racing Team says, that San Francisco's bid did win, but San Francisco's bid is a 75% opportunity, which leaves 25%. And as our friend Yogi Berra said, "It ain't over till it's over." And I feel that the state needs to move forward, guns blazing. And whether we wind up with pre-regatta or some of the semifinals, the improvements that can be made to Fort Adams, both waterfront as well as to the fort, are minimal compared with what the hundreds of millions that San Francisco has to spend just to catch up with Narragansett Bays and Newport's assets. And we've got what it takes. We even have swimmable water in the summer. San Francisco water, you can't go near 50 degrees in the summer. There's a lot of reasons why we need to pursue this effort. And win, lose, or get quarterfinals or semifinals, these long-term improvements can be most beneficial to Rhode Island and to jobs, to our boating industry, to future tax revenues. And so basically, that's why I put forward this resolution. So I'd like to get the entire state behind it. Yes. Where's the money going to come from? I know the Senate President, Pavy Weed, has said that it probably have to come from capital funds, not the general fund. I believe that frankly, a larger piece of the meals and hotel tax should be directed towards this effort, basically because the most recent tourism numbers in the state of Rhode Island are kind of frightening. And 10, just six years ago, 2004, the state of Rhode Island spent over $3 million on our Tourism Council and Department. The current year, we're $720,000. Yet we have an industry that's been growing at 5 and 6% annually. There's a mismatch here. Something's wrong. I think towns, I think the state needs to, and here's the best place to show that we understand that investment is the right idea in this state. We need investment for jobs and tax revenues, so hopefully that'll happen. So I have changed the resolution, supporting Middletown's and supporting pretty much everything I just said. I was willing to knock out my number whereas, number six, the first two lines where most Town Councils of Rhode Island were unable to call special meetings. I knocked that out, just keeping the Town of Middletown was able to call a special meeting and unanimously passed the resolution. And then on number nine, kind of a wrap-up whereas, I said political leadership in Rhode Island must learn that our great state needs new taxpayers, not more taxes. Rhode Island needs to invest in our natural resources, our assets, and the advantages that the state has to help grow our tourism business and job creation. So that's how I changed whereas, number nine. So I think this is very important for the state. I think we need to move forward as though we're still in the running for the Americas Cup because there are these opportunities, and we don't want to miss an opportunity like this because this is, this is most tangible and transparent. You can see people in restaurants. You can see a bay being used. You can see the action. This is incredibly important for the state psyche, and maybe we can turn around the problems that we've had over the last number of years with our economic malaise. So, council members, what say you?
Carol? I would just like to say, with the changes you've made, it's made, makes the resolution much more positive, and the Americas Cup has been a successful tradition for Rhode Island for many years. And it's had a very positive impact in the past on Rhode Island, bringing out-of-towners into the state to spend money, to, you know, bring back our economy. And I have to agree with Jim. I see this as a positive move. So I will support the resolution as amended.
Further discussion? Further discussion here at the table?
We had the Americas Cup for 30 years?
30 to '83? What's that, 53 years?
53 years.
And then I really, I really questioned that loss we took in '83. I have to tell you.
I agree.
All the pros will tell you, something went wrong there.
I would be great to get it back. I move approval. What do you want to do with this? You want to send it?
Get it out to the councils.
Get it out to all the councils.
Would you please apply me with the changes to nine at the end of the meeting? At the end of the meeting?
Oh, yes. I'll be happy to. Thank you. Got it tough to edit when I was surrounded by four of my colleagues at the work session.
I wish I had a picture of that, Jim.
I move approval.
That's a Kodak moment. We have a motion in a second on the table. Ready to vote? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention motion carries. 5-0-0. Thank you, Jim. Which brings us to Communication C, and I'll turn this over to Kathy, that you asked this to be removed.
I think just so we could discuss this, and Mr. Alfred had talked about this at the pre-meeting work session. Steve, I'll kind of turn this over to you about the jitney, the Rogue Island jitney to operate around, jitney service between URI and Narragansett. And that Narragansett and South Kingstown were both in agreement that we did not support this along with the university and some of the other, this South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention. But I guess we're just acknowledging it, but if you wanted to add anything to it.
Now, as I've pointed out in the correspondence that I've provided to the council, the information on the public hearing that was being scheduled came to us after the last council meeting. In conversations with the URI administration, we found that they were not aware of the application. Only the towns of South Kingstown and Narragansett had been advised of the application. The application would have provided for a private company to provide a bus service on a circuit for nighttime hours to service eateries and bars in Narragansett and potentially South Kingstown for a round trip to the university. We felt that that was an inappropriate transportation proposal. The university agreed, since the average age at the university is below 21, there really wouldn't be a need for them to be, being brought back to the university on a, on that type of a circuit. The community partnership in South Kingstown and Narragansett also provided letters objecting to the application being approved by the state as well as the university. The university sent several administrators and attorney to present their position, as well as the Town of Narragansett and South Kingstown. We were represented by Police Lieutenant Horaho and the Deputy Chief represented the Town of Narragansett. The application is still pending before the carriers commission at this time. We expect a decision on the approval or disapproval of the application, probably within the next 60 days.
Thank you. So I'll just make a motion to accept the communication from the Town Manager and the letters of response.
Second.
Any further discussion here? Jim?
Yes, Steve, I think I had mentioned a RAS. I don't know if anyone from the university is here or whether you talked to anyone at the university, but have they, do they have programs? Do we know of programs that they are working with, with their students, with the kids down the line? Bus service improved? Is there more people on campus? Do we know what's positive and what's negative coming from the university?
I don't have any specific reports from the university on how they're handling off-street, off-campus activities of the students. I think that probably is a subject for a Town and Gown meeting when the university administration meets with the council. We did also provide you with a copy of the university's policy as it relates to the use of private sector buses using the university property. But at this point, I think that the university has had several initiatives. In fact, the university had, at one time, working through Riptre, attempted to use a late bus schedule that would take a circuit through Narragansett and South Kingstown. And that was discontinued based on the program not being successful and there being abuse within the program as far as some of the users. So the concern also here was that we would see the same type of behavior difficulties that had occurred when the university had tried that as a prototype.
Thank you.
Any further discussion here? Jim, and if I could just add that the South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention, which meets monthly, has a representative at their meetings now, Dan Graney from URI. So there's been a closer connection there with the Partnership for Prevention in URI.
Thank you.
I could just add that. Okay. We have a motion in a second. I don't believe we voted, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention motion carries. 5-0-0. Which now brings us to comments from interested citizens. So the mic is open for any interested citizens to come to the mic.
Ella, the Heart Safe Community was going to be represented here.
Okay. Steve, could we just do one thing before you come? Thank you. Okay. We have Mr. O'Neil here, and is going to be talking about our Heart Safe Community. So welcome, and thank you for coming.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here, Madam President, council members, Town Manager Alfred. It is my distinct pleasure to be in your presence tonight to share some tremendous news. So often we hear bad news as far as what's happening in our community, in our state. But tonight, on behalf of the American Heart Association, which I am privileged to be Chairman of the Board, I am here to present some tremendous news. It is not news that just fell out of the sky. It is news that is the result of tremendous hard work and vision on the part of our Town Manager, Steve Alfred, and our EMS Director, Keith Richards. So I'm particularly delighted to be here in the capacity of Chairman of the Board of the American Heart Association and as a resident and native of South Kingstown. I'd like at this point to call up to the microphone David Hiltz, who represents the American Heart Association as well. But before I do, the news that we're here to report is that South Kingstown is being awarded the designation of a Heart Safe Community. That is the third community, and South Kingstown will be the third community in the entire state of Rhode Island to be awarded this designation, and it is actually a very big deal. One of my initiatives as Board Chair is we are attempting to have the entire state of Rhode Island designated a Heart Safe State, which would be the first in the history of our country. And this goes a long way. South Kingstown should be very proud of the work that's been done and the vision and the effort that's gone into this. We have some designation materials that we're going to present. There are some signs, which I think we can all agree on, are actually very good and pleasant signs that can stay up at all times and will recognize our community as a place that we feel safe and secure. One of the critical things I think is important is that as South Kingstown goes, in many ways so goes other communities. So I can see our leadership, your leadership, that you have shown, it will put pressure on Narragansett, East Greenwich, other communities to follow suit, so indeed we can achieve the goal of being a Heart Safe State. So at this point, without further ado, I'd like to introduce David Hiltz, representing the American Heart Association, to provide a little bit more information as to what this designation means, how you've earned it, and I believe we have some materials we're going to pass along as well. David?
My name is Dave Hiltz. I'm a resident of Westerly, Rhode Island, a place not too far from here, but I spent about 15 years working at the South County Hospital, so Wakefield and South Kingstown are not foreign to me. So I'll echo the remarks previously made, and just add a few others so that you understand the value of this achievement that you've made as a community collectively. So 50% of men and women in Western civilization with significant heart disease show the first sign or evidence that they're, that they have heart disease in a very dramatic way, and that's with a sudden collapse. And sudden cardiac arrest is the number-one killer of adults in North America. So, you know, there are probably somewhere between 20 and 30 residents and/or visitors to this area who have sudden cardiac arrest on an annual basis. And if we can save two, three, four of those people, certainly that's a big payout and return on investment. So when a victim collapses, survival is very dependent on bystander CPR, early shock, often accomplished with AEDs, just like the one you have out here near the elevator to protect all the people in this building, and a system that can bring about the early arrival of other BLS, Basic Life Support and Advanced Life Support Services. So again, I echo the accolades for EMS Director Richards, under the guidance of the Town Manager and other leaders here in the community in building that stronger chain of survival or metaphor that represents those things that will help somebody survive a sudden cardiac arrest. Now, to explain fully, the Heart Safe Community Program is truly a Rhode Island Department of Health program. So you're actually getting designated by the Rhode Island Department of Health, a program supported by the American Heart Association. A Heart Safe program delivers a dynamic message of hope, a hope of saving lives, lives of our fathers, mothers, brothers, sisters, valued members of the community. South Kingstown is very fortunate to have the support of its local officials, the leadership of the EMS Director, a highly functional EMS department that strives to provide the very best care possible, a police department, I would add, that aggressively seeks to perform CPR and early defibrillation, and the support of the community at large. So on behalf of the Rhode Island Department of Health and the American Heart Association, congratulations. We believe that Heart Safe Communities is an important means to save lives, and life-saving is the highest possible definition and expression of hope. And I think you'll get a real charge at seeing the signs hung on the entryways and portals into your community. Again, thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you, David. Do we have comments here, questions here at the table?
Keith.
Yeah. I'm going to get to that in one second. Yeah. Chief.
Could Keith Richards join us? And we were able to bring two, two signs that we will give to you, and I'm told more are available, so.
I just wanted to say thank you to the present council and all the past councils. As you know, I've been here for over 20 years, and there's never been a single day where I've received resistance to any plan to incorporate plans to deliver EMS to this town. Mr. Alfred's support has been very unique amongst other mayors and town managers, and that's based on stories I've heard from other EMS directors, fire chiefs, et cetera. So I just want to say thank you all, and thank you to the council members who aren't here for all the years that you've supported us, and this is what we can do when we all cooperate and get a job done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Before we close on this subject, I just wanted people to understand that the application that Keith filed was not just an application, it was an implementation plan. What the application requires to be done is to be able to increase the number of persons that are trained within the community in CPR activities. Training programs have been provided and will continue to be provided to increase those numbers in South Kingstown. Keith also provided for the AEDs to be placed within each of the municipal buildings, as well as to provide the training programs for the employees in those buildings to be able to properly use the equipment once installed. Also, I think the council's well aware that with the paramedic level of training that is required for our workforce within the emergency medical services program itself, we have an advanced program that provides for major assistance for cardiac arrest, where we're also being able to do transports to Ken House Hospital where they had the STEM Center. So I think, yes, the community is being acknowledged for the program and the acceptance into the program through AMA and through AHA and the State Health Department. But I think this is really an acknowledgement of the EMS Department and the programs that they have provided and are continuing to provide, and I don't think I could be prouder of a program from what we have under Keith's tutelage. So Keith, thank you again.
Absolutely. And Keith, from the Town Council, a big thank you for taking care of the citizens of South Kingstown and keeping them healthy. Often when I walk through South Kingstown, that EMS services is one that comes to the forefront, and people thank, you know, for the Town of South Kingstown for the gift of what we have for our emergency medical services. So thank you. Also, thank you to Kevin O'Neil and David for, you know, presenting tonight. We appreciate that. Any further comments here at the table? I would just like to mention one thing. The Girl Scouts invited the Town Council to their kickoff Girl Scout Cookie Sale on Saturday, so I was at the Narragansett roller rink, so Carol and I gladly accepted the first box of cookies to the South Kingstown Town Council, and we will share them at the end. There's the new, the new brand this year, it's called Shout-outs. And if I could just read a, just a little blurb on the side of the cookie box here. It says, "The Girl Scout Cookie Program promotes financial skills, goal-setting, decision-making, customer service, money management, and proceeds that the girls make from this sales." So if you can seek a local Girl Scout and buy a box of cookies or two, would be greatly appreciated. So on behalf of the Girl Scouts to the Town Council, we'll eat them later. Any further comments from interested citizens? Steve?
I'm Steve Corleve, West Kingston. I just wanted to say a quick prayer for those people that were greatly affected by this weekend's tragedy, and for the young man that unfortunately was so deranged that he thought that that was a wise thing to do, and, because he'll also need a little bit of condolences. And, you know, I come up here and I speak quite a bit because being in the military, I got to go around the world, and people just do not understand what a gift it is that we can actually talk to our representatives in so many ways. And it was just a tragedy that that happened. And, I don't know, the things I just kind of wanted to talk, to talk about tonight was, snowed the other night, and I don't know if it was Friday or Saturday night, it was like one inch of snow on the ground at 3 o'clock in the morning, a snowplow's going by, you know. And I've kind of said before, I just think that's a waste of money. We're going to get two inches, that was predicted, a snowplow could have come by, you know, they could have started up earlier in the morning on Sunday. morning on Sunday, nobody's going to work, none of that kind of stuff. There's just no reason to have $100,000 trucks with tired men behind them driving all night long. It's just, doesn't make any sense. And then the next thing you hear the next morning is, towns are out of budget for their highway stuff already, you know, for their, for their snow repair. And you go, well, yeah, guys are out all night on Saturday and Sunday nights spending time and a half. It's just not, it's just not worth it. And the other thing I just kind of heard everybody talking from the other meeting, and, you know, I believe in environmental, you know, stuff, the energy and all that stuff, and I just want to be concerned when you guys are talking about windmills and all that stuff, that we don't fall into the not-in-my-backyard syndrome. You know, everybody wants green energy, but then nobody wants it in their backyard. So just, which one do you want, you know? And to me, it's pretty important to have that environmental, the green energy. And I came tonight because, you know, really, I just want to hear what happens with interviews because, you know, I did put my name in for a position, and I don't know, I just kind of think it's great that people come and, you know, they want to be part of the, part of the process. And it was good to hear people and see people here being interviewed, and it's not that scary. So, I don't know, thank you very much for listening to me, and thank you very much for serving.
Thank you, Steve. Any further comments from interested citizens? Okay, which brings us to the town manager's
I received a notice today from the superintendent of schools indicating that the Commissioner of Education will be at the South Kingston High School on January 19th. This will be a continuation of their public review on the proposed changes to graduation requirements in the state of Rhode Island. So that meeting will be held on the 19th. I do not have a start time at this point. I believe it was scheduled for 5:00, but I don't have that confirmed. But it will be on the 19th, which is Wednesday, the 19th, at South Kingston Auditorium at the high school. I have other comments to make on a resolution that I presented to the council, but I'll hold those comments till we get to that on the agenda tonight.
Steve, I did talk to Kristen today, and she did, she did confirm 5:00. And if anybody, any elected officials would like to come, she's willing to set some seats at the front. Okay, so if anybody's interested in coming, if you could let me know, I'm going to get back to her.
Excuse me, Ella, the conversation, though, is simply on the diploma issue, the three-tier, four-tier, whatever.
That's what it's limited to.
It's on the graduation requirements provision. It's not dealing with state-aid education.
Okay. Did you have anything else, Steve?
No, as I said, I'll just wait on the comments as far as the bridge issue.
All right, town solicitors' report?
Happy New Year. Nothing in addition to report. Thank you.
Okay. We do have one person on the appointment. Is it Historic District Commission, Carol?
Right. Richard Youngkin, whose term expired on December 2010, would like to be considered for reappointment. So I move that we appoint him to the Historic District Commission for a term of three years. That would bring him to December 2013.
Second?
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. And we will get to, you know, further discussions, Mr. Corley. I know that we do have one of your interviews, but unfortunately, we didn't get to it tonight, but we will get to it. Okay?
Thank you.
Which brings us to new business. We talked in the public work session, this, actually, let me just read, we're in new business item B. "This is a resolution endorsing the complete streets concept as a transportation planning tool as follows. Whereas streets constitute a large and valuable portion of the public space, and whereas streets need to be accessible, convenient, and connected corridors for all transportation modes and uses that complement and support adjoining land uses, building, and community character, and whereas streets that integrate and invite multiple transportation choices contribute to the public life of a community, sustainable economic development, and efficient movement of people and goods, and whereas encouraging non-motorized transportation provides residents with mobility options, reduces transportation costs, enhances community connections, improves public health, advances environmental stewardship, reduces fuel consumption, and maximizes the use of roadway infrastructure, and whereas complete streets are those that provide safe and convenient access for pedestrians, bicyclists, transit riders, motorists, motorists of all ages and abilities, and whereas complete streets concepts are compatible with the circulation element of the existing and planned South Kingston Comprehensive Plan. Now therefore, we, the town council of the town of South Kingston, do hereby indicate our support and encouragement of the use of complete streets concept in the planning and redevelopment of transportation-related infrastructure improvements within the town of South Kingston and the state of Rhode Island." And I believe Vin's going to present on this.
Good evening. The genesis of the resolution under consideration tonight really goes back to the fall, where my office and the planning board were approached by the Rhode Island chapter of the Sierra Club. Mr. Collins from the Sierra Club is here as well, with a request that we consider that a resolution in support of the concept. The design of complete streets is a, is an integrated model that considers the needs and safety of all user groups, pedestrians, bicyclists, public transit, in addition to the automobile. The model is really a little bit of a departure from the traditional street design model, which is automobile-centric. It's a very flexible technique that considers community character, aesthetic, and environmental factors, and can be customized to meet the particular needs of a community. In a memorandum provided earlier, I had provided a frequently asked questions attachment that discusses this in general. There was also a meeting held in the middle of November of the university. It was a Complete Streets South Kingston Community Meeting at the Memorial Union. It was organized and moderated by Mr. Collins of the Sierra Club, and speakers at the meeting included Bob Smith, RIDOT Managing Engineer, Ms. Deanna Casey of the American Association of Retired Persons, and I also spoke at the meeting. It was, and we talked about the town's planning perspectives regarding this concept and, and just transportation issues generally. It was attended by more than 50 persons. It was very good turnout, and it was a very, very much positive discussion of transportation needs and opportunities in South Kingston and at the university as well. As noted in the resolution, the general concept is supported by the language and policies of the South Kingston Comprehensive Plan. It's also, this approach is also consistent with the planning board's philosophy concerning circulation and road design. We do plan to reference complete streets specifically in the comp plan update that's now under active work. And the planning board discussed specifically the resolution at a work session held in November the 23rd, and at that, at that meeting, it was their consensus to endorse this favorably to the council. I would also note that RIDOT and Federal Highway Administration are very much interested in this concept as a policy tool for transportation planning, and that may provide some opportunities in the future for the town relative to the Transportation Improvement Program that the state puts together to, you know, have new transportation projects in the community, you know, really considers issues that are a little bit outside the traditional pavement boundaries. So I think that may be a good opportunity, and I guess in closing, I would echo the support of the planning board towards this resolution and ask, you know, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I think Mr. Collins had, would like to add his perspective from that briefly to, prior to your consideration.
Thanks, Vin. Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. I rise on a few accounts tonight, probably three, because I'm not just a, you know, the program manager of the Sierra Club, but I've been a lifelong resident of the town. So I'm really excited to see this resolution get attention and have the support of the planning board, the planning department. It's been a joy working within the community and getting people excited about this issue. I, you know, we had a great turnout at our community meeting to talk about it, but I also, before that, I knocked on, you know, 100 resident doors and talked about the issue with community members, and not a single one of those people was opposed to this, to this concept. And it's really good to see that, you know, people in general care, policymakers care, and that's what's going to make the planning policy successful, hopefully, when it's adopted. So I do encourage you to, to pass this resolution. The numerous benefits are sort of outlined in there. Took your breath away, they were so long. Sorry for all those words. And yeah, thank you very much for considering it.
Do we have any questions here at the table? Jim?
Vin, can you give me some examples of developments, some planning issues coming to your department where we might be able to adjust from some of our current, you know, pedestrian street, et cetera, where we might change?
Well, I think the planning board, I think, has been really trying to address this concept for a long period of time without really calling it, you know, the, by complete streets. Some examples I could offer was off of South Road, the newer developments on the easterly side of South Road, there was an active effort made to connect those developments, Kingston Woods and Potter Farm, via bicycle path to the existing bike path system. I think a lot of it is an awareness of how you provide quality connections that encourage all users in a safe manner. So I think bike paths, and obviously, I think the town's had a tremendously positive experience with the O'Neill Bike Path, and not just for bicyclists, you see, it's routinely used as a transportation mode for people in the town doing errands. It's, it's an efficient, sustainable model. I think the greatest benefits I see perhaps are going forward where, in particular with state projects as they, as they become on the drawing board, with the input of, of not just considering how cars move would be important, and I think could be a positive thing for us to get enhanced transportation projects that are, that are, you know, consider issues beyond the right of weight, or so to speak, of, and the simple use of the automobile. But it's a very general concept. Some communities, it's been, I think that at least two communities in the state now have adopted these resolutions. I've looked, I did some traveling a few years ago to Charlotte, North Carolina, and that's a community that's been a leader in this effort, and they have a design manual that they've adopted that creates a hierarchy of streets and talks about what the design concept should be, you know, and it's really quite interesting, and I think they, that's a very pedestrian-friendly downtown, and it's a pretty forward-thinking way of looking at transportation planning issues. But I think it'll position us well to have this awareness going forward and try to, you know, make sure we're not, you know, favoring one, the automobile over all the other user groups.
I just wanted to mention how we discussed just last week about the connector from the South County Commons and the Broad Rock Fields and the bike path that we were discussing the other day, Vin. And this sounds like it would be right up the alley of complete streets where it would connect via bicycle, walking, to come from South County Commons. And I think it would go all the way to Old Mountain Field, and obviously, then you're right into Wakefield and connecting right on through. So all the more reason to try and get South County Commons to come on board and help finance that project. That would be, it would be a great addition to, you know, this resolution and the intent of the planning board and complete streets.
Thank you, council. I'm Bud McLeod, and as I mentioned earlier, I'm here wearing two hats tonight, and the selfish one is the neighborhood. I'm in the South County Hospital neighborhood, and I've been very jealous for 10 years now because the hospital street called Canyon has a sidewalk on one side of that street, all the way from the hospital on down to Main Street. That's the kind of thing that I think Woodruff would love to have as well and should have because of the kind of traffic that both of those streets provide. And the cross street, that's where I live, that's Christopher, and that needs to have a sidewalk on one side of the street. I'm willing to give up my front yard to make that all possible. So there's one thing that our town has that a lot of places don't have, and it's been mentioned already, the bike path. The bike path is a superstar for South Kingston, and we'd like to add complements to that bike path, which these sidewalks would, of course, provide. With me tonight is my friend, the chairman of the State Legislative Committee for the AARP, and Mr. John O'Hara consented to come and, and join in. John, do you have a remark?
I'm wearing two hats, too. Not only with AARP, but I've just been elected the president of the senior youth group, and I will go back and tell them all about this. I've been involved with this complete streets. I was in the team last year that went down to Newport, and am I too loud? My wife says I got a big mouth anyway. I was down in Newport and Middletown, and I walked the streets, and I was amazed that a sidewalk went so far then disappeared. You had to walk across the street to find another sidewalk. Or halfway through, there's a pole right in the middle, and if you were pushing a carriage or something, you'd have to go into the street to go around it. I think it's wonderful. I'm very proud of South Kingston. I came from Seacoak, Mass, and I came down here, and I think you have so many wonderful things, a dog park and, and things for the bike, and I think it's wonderful. And with the senior center and working with them, is there's anything we can do to help you? Just let me know. And I am so happy that we are coming to this side of the river to work on complete streets, and thank you for listening to us. Thank you.
John, could you just state your last name for the record? Did you get it, Dale?
Gotcha.
Gotcha, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Bud. Any further comments?
I'll make a motion to approve item B.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0.
And we would just like to absolutely thank you for all of your work, Abel Collins. Thank you so much, as well as the planning board and the planning department. Thank you.
When's the next meeting, Abel?
We'll, we'll set that now. Let me know.
Your work has just begun.
I think you said Facebook.
Yes, he did.
I'll never see it.
We'll let you know, Jim.
Okay, which brings us to new business, item D. "This is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to indispensable custom woodworking Six Spring Cove Road near Narragansett, Rhode Island for tables for the Peacedale Library in the amount not to exceed $15,200, and as further described in a memorandum from the library director of the town manager dated January 3, 2011, entitled Bid Recommendation: Tables for the Peacedale Library." Steve?
Two bids were received on the construction of these two tables. The two tables will replace, replace the round tables that now support the 12 computer units, the public access computers at Peacedale Library. We'll be replacing those round We'll be replacing those round tables when we go up to 16 units that'll be available for public access. There'll be eight on each of these two tables that'll be constructed. Two bids were received, one from WB Mason and the other from the low bidder, indispensable custom woodworking out of Naragansett. Recommendations to award to the low bidder. Funds for this project will be paid for through Champlin, Champlin Grant Funds that are held by the town. They've approved us using, this was money that was unexpended from, from a previous grant that had been awarded. Any excess in the cost is going to be paid for through the friends of the Peacedale Library. So there's no municipal cost involved, but certainly it's an enhancement to the library services that we will be able to provide.
Thank you, Steve. Comments here at the table?
Motion to approve new business item D.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. New business, item E. A resolution authorizing an award of bid to Santa Buckley Energy Incorporated, PO Box 1141, Bridgeport, Connecticut, for the purchase of unleaded gasoline and ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel from January 1, 2011 to December 31, 2011, with option to extend for up to two one-year term extensions at the Daily Journal of Commerce price port of providence, less the discount of .0153 gallons, gallons for unleaded gasoline, and the increment of .0051 cents per gallon for the ultra-low sulfur diesel, to include any applicable taxes in accordance with specifications as described in a resolution from the City of Warwick dated December 21st, 2010, regarding their bid number 2011-137, entitled Gasoline and Low Sulfur Diesel Fuel, and as further described in a memorandum from the financial controller to the town manager dated January 3, 2011, and entitled Statewide Municipal Gasoline and Diesel Fuel Award of Contract.
The town works through the Rhode Island Municipal Purchasing Agents Association that solicits the bid for the delivery of gasoline and diesel fuel. Essentially, what the determining factor is what the discount price will be from each of the companies that submits transportation costing. When we purchase fuel, whether it's diesel or gasoline, what we're purchasing is based on what the price is that's recorded in the Journal of Commerce on any given day that the delivery is going to be made. The bid increment or a discount is really what is being bid. The, the low bid is from Santa, Santa Buckley Energy out of Connecticut. The, the discount price is actually an increase over what the discount was that was in the current year. In fact, the increase will be about eight tenths of one cent increased discount for gasoline purchases and about 1.2 cents for purchases on the diesel fuel. So I would recommend that the council award based on the presentation in a memo from Frank Xavier.
Make a motion to approve new business item E.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Which brings us to new business, item F. A resolution authorizing an additional $15,000 for construction administration costs for the animal shelter design project originally awarded on January 28, 2008, to Architecture Incorporated, 413 Central Avenue, building number 2, Pawtucket, Rhode Island, in the amount of $75,000 to be paid in three phases. $7,500 for schematic design, $52.5 for design, development, and construction negotiation, and $15,000 for construction administration, supplemented by an award on December 8, 2008 for $8,000 in contingency funds for reimbursable cost, and as further described in a memorandum from the police chief to the town manager dated December 30, 2010, and entitled Request for Supplemental Construction Administration Fees: Architectural Services for Construction of the New Animal Shelter Facility. Steve?
As referenced in the chief's memorandum, the council first entered into contract with with this firm in January of 2008. The work on the program through the schematics and the design development phase took an extended period of time, based on what the construction cost came in at. Redesign was necessary, value engineering was incorporated. The length of the construction schedule itself has also been lengthened. At this point, we had anticipated the project would have been completed late in 2010. We're now looking at a final completion date, probably in March or April of this year. I think the town will be well proud of the product that they, they end up with based on the completion of the project. I also think that Architecture, as a firm, has stood by the town, provided the specialized engineering, and has stood, stood pat through the time that we've worked with the construction company. And that based on them providing documentation on the hours that have been expended on the project, the request for the $15,000 increase is warranted and should be approved. I'd recommend approval as presented in the chief's memo.
Motion to approve of new business item F.
Second?
Do we have discussion here at the table? Okay. Ready to vote on new business item F? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Now, new business, item G. We're going to have a motion to table, but would you like to speak about it first, Steve?
Yes, my recommendation to the council is to table the resolution that was presented as item G. Item G was a resolution based on interaction with the State Department of Transportation. As noted in the resolution, on December 15 of 2010, the town received initial notification that the Department of Transportation was reducing the weight limits on the Wakefield Bridge at Main Street, the bridge where the dam is near the auto dealership. That was the first notice that the town had received. The reduction in the weights were sizable. We went from a, a weight limitation of 19 tons for a two-axle vehicle, 25 tons for a three-axle, and 37 tons for a five-axle. And that was reduced essentially in half to 10 tons on the two, two-axle, 13 on the three-axle, and 19 on the five-axle vehicles. Essentially, what that was going to do is to restrict considerable truck traffic across that bridge. The concern that I had upon initial notification was, there were several concerns. One was the limitation would restrict vehicular traffic across that bridge would have impact on the downtown business district. It would have impact on public safety as well as transportation network that's used by the bus companies for the school department. Also, because that's a public safety access to the hospital for the Wakefield-Kingston, as well as outlining areas, it became a real serious concern. What we needed to understand after the notice was provided were threefold. One was what was the extent of damage to the bridge that required and warranted the weight limitation reduction? Two, what remediation steps were necessary to correct that defect? And was the defect substantial enough that it would close vehicular traffic during the time of, time of repair? I contacted the Director of Transportation's Office last Thursday at the same time that we were preparing the resolution for consideration, and requested that he provide assistance on each of the areas that I've just outlined. I've had several conversations with the department, and as of this morning, the department has indicated that they will re-sign the bridge and increase the weight limit back to its original limitation. That means that it will go back to what had occurred prior to December 15, which means that there will really be little restriction on the, on the bridge, other than on heavy vehicles that would be over 37 tons if they were of a five-axle nature. That would not interfere with commerce, would not interfere with the, the buses that use that, or the, the Riptor buses that have a bus line along Main Street and High Street. To lift the restriction on the weight limitations, what the state will do is to cordon off the breakdown lane or the parking lane on the bridge itself. They will do that, not like in 2008 when they placed stanchions to prevent parking, but they will do it with a series of plastic jersey barriers that'll be filled with water. Those will restrict traffic into the, the parking lane itself. Once that parking lane restriction is put into place, the limitations on the bridge will be lifted. The remediation steps that are necessary are, are limited. They will not involve the deck of the bridge. What the Department of Transportation will do is hopefully amend an existing contract for work this year where there is one beam located really on the sidewalk on the north side of the bridge, which has been undermined. That bridge needs to be, that bridge beam needs to be enhanced as far as its strength. That will be done using a fiber mesh wrap that will be placed on that, that beam. Hopefully, that can be incorporated into a contract this year. Once the, the wrap has been completed on that beam, the restriction as far as the jersey barriers will be lifted and they will be removed. So there should not be any interference with traffic or weight limitations on that bridge other than what has been in place for the last several years. That should not restrict traffic, it should not interfere with either the public safety aspect of that road network, nor the commerce that occurs on Main Street that uses that bridge on a day-to-day basis. There will be no deck work that's required, so there'll not even be restricted lane problems during the time of the remediation. So I think the State Department of Transportation has addressed each of the questions and concerns that I had placed in the memorandum for the council's consideration, and I would ask that the council table the, table the matter at this time, and will continue to work with the department to ensure that the steps that they've outlined today are in fact implemented in an expedited fashion. I want to also thank the Director of Transportation, Mike Lewis, for his personal attention to the issue and addressing the town's concerns in an expeditious form.
Carol? I just wanted to say that good work, Steve, because there was quite a bit of scuttlebutt last week from different business owners in downtown Wakefield over the possible, you know, fixing of the bridge and closure of the bridge, but obviously, that was premature and it was good to have a speedy resolution.
I think that was unfortunate. There was a great deal of rumors and a great deal of concern that was expressed, and once the detailed information was available by, by DOT, I think what we're trying to do is to put that to rest at this point. DOT still has actions that they need to take, but I think that certainly the director's made a personal commitment to see through on those.
Very good. I move that we table?
Do we have any further comments?
Oh, thank you, Steve. You know, having an office downtown, yeah, it was a little bit of a shock a few weeks back to...
That was one of the few reasons I wanted the bridge closed.
Thank you. But really, from the council, many thanks to Director Lewis's fast and quick attention to this, and very important because a 50% reduction would have been a massive change in driving habits and transportation habits. So, and the fact that they're going to get to the repairs as quickly as possible is very much in the community's interest. So thank him, thank you, and everyone else involved with this.
Again, the caveat that the director issued was that funds are limited, there's a potential for a 20% reduction in federal funds based on the actions that are occurring in Washington at this point, but that they will attempt to get that work done this year. If it's not done during 2011, the barriers will have to stay, and the work would be scheduled as part of their work plan in 2012. But he was hopeful that, that they would be able to incorporate it into an existing contract during the calendar 11 year. But no promises were made on that aspect.
Thank you, Steve. And do you think at this time, should we send a letter from the Town Council and the town to thank Director Lewis?
Once we see the barriers up and the signs replaced, I'd be glad to send such a letter out.
As soon as we get those phone calls.
You know, I think that, you know, the director was indicating a desire to do it in an expeditious fashion as soon as Wednesday, but obviously, with the snow, I expect that a number of things are going to be coming into play. And I think that it's going to take us probably till next week to get some of this stuff done.
I'm just amazed that it's, you've moved this one. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Can we have a motion to table new business, item G? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. And I would just like to remind the public and our Town Council members, on Thursday, this Thursday, January 13, at 6:30 in the Town Chambers here, we have our third capital improvement plan, which is a joint Town Council/School Committee session. So please, everybody come or stay tuned on the television. We have a motion to adjourn?
So move?
Adjourn.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries. Motion is, meeting is adjourned.